Haven't been reached, this town meeting stands open for business. First order of business will be... Okay, thank you. The Scouts from Girl Scout Cadets, Junior Cadets Troop 68002 will present the colors. And carrying the American flag is Rachel McCarthy, who is a candidate for the Gold Award at the Girl Scouts. Carrying the town flag is Ella Sheena, and also accompanied by Victoria Newberry. And then, we're in for a treat today. Julianne Sheehan, who is a Daisy, but also the youngest member of the American Legion Auxiliary, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies? To the flag of the United States of America, and to the holy water which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Thank you, ladies. So I have the following non-voters as being present on the hall floor. Jerry Perry, our interim town administrator, Bob Dwyer, the Chief of Police, Mike Feinberg, the Chief of Fire, Kevin Andrews, the principal of the school, and Tony Periansozzi, Superintendent of the School, and Dan Kane from the Item. Are there any other non-registered voters on the floor?
Yes, Dan Cofflin.
Okay. Dan Cofflin from Cofflin Engineering is here as well. Yes. What's your name? Spencer Cassidy from the Item. Thank you.
Ms. Conlon.
Just a second. Yes. Neen Callahan? Okay, thank you. So every year for the last 26 years, I have been awarding a Citizen of the Year Award at this time, and this year is going to be no exception. So the Citizen of the Year this year is a Vietnam Vet who watched her first Memorial Parade in 1974. She marched in every Memorial Day Parade since then. She joined the Memorial Day Committee in 1976, and she has spent 42 years on that committee, and is the Chair of the Committee. She's run the parade for as long, far back as I can remember, including the days when she and her good friends would feed all of the marchers right here in Town Hall. Also in 1976, she led the effort that produced the wonderful bicentennial quilt. That is on display at the Historical Society, and she gave a lecture on it about two weeks ago, which was marvelous. And it contains really fine artwork from some of the most notable town citizens, many of whom are no longer with us. And I forgot to mention, in setting up the parade, she gets all the bands and arranges for all the people to march and has to do all the correspondence, and she hates it. She's hated it for 42 years.[327.16][327.16](Laughter). Meanwhile, in the late 70s, she and Barbara Kostick founded Nahant Youth Soccer. She ran the Nahant Youth Soccer for, I think it was 12 years, but it might have been 18, I'm not sure.[344.13][344.13](Laughter). And so many of the folks here in this room have had soccer learning experiences under Molly. She served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for many years, which is kind of a thankless task. But you might be wondering, why Citizen of the Year this year? What has she done for us lately?[366.13][366.13](Laughter). And I ask her that all the time.[371.47][371.47](Laughter). Well, this year, one of the things she's done is she founded a unit of the Nahant American Legion Auxiliary. You saw the youngest member of it just a little bit ago, which is another wonderful way for us to honor our veterans and their families, both of whom have sacrificed so much for us. For example, Kellyanne, her dad, a year or so ago, was just activated and sent someplace he couldn't even tell us where he was going, and was there for months on end. So they continue to sacrifice, and we owe them so much. But I know you're anxious to find out who the recipient is.[421.91][421.91](Laughter).
He said this would never happen as long as he was moderator.[474.53][474.53](Laughter). But anything with Calanthus Sears' name on it, because I am very honored.
So it almost never happened, and actually, we ran out of space on the old plaque, so this is a new plaque, but it took you 26 years to make it, babe. 26 years. And now, Richard Lombard will present the Charles Kelly Scholarship.
He was a great selectman, a good friend, and he served the town very, very well. And I'm very pleased with the recipient this year. The recipient is Caitlin Foley, 75 Washtree.[582.04][582.04](Applause). Caitlin, come up, please. I just want you to...I want to give a little bio on you, all right? Do you mind? I won't talk about your uncle.[603.04][603.04](Laughter). Although he played very well last night. Caitlin is a graduate of St. Mary's of Lynn. Community service began with her at Johnson School, where her science department took part in the beach cleanups, and she does that on a regular basis. She ran hat and mitten drive at St. Mary's, fed the homeless at the Boston Carmen during Holy Week, and participated in a number of other projects to feed the hungry. Caitlin quotes her sophomore teacher, who said, "When we serve others, we should not accept any gratitude." Great quote. "But give thanks to those who are helping, for they are allowing us to do good in the world." We thank you, Caitlin, and we wish you the very best at the University of Rhode Island. And here's a check.[665.19][665.19](Applause). Here's a check. Congratulations, and best wishes. All right?
And now, the American Legion Scholarship will be presented by Molly Conlon, or?
We're Conlon together.
Okay, all right. Anna and Molly, come on up.
Well, I'm just going to read the first paragraph of Rose's letter of acceptance to St. Anselm. On behalf of the Admission Committee and the entire college community, I am very pleased to offer you admission to St. Anselm College. After a very careful review of your credentials, we are confident that your academic and co-curricular accomplishments will add greatly to our community. Your intended major is business. Congratulations and welcome to the St. Anselm class of 2022. And it is my honor to present the American Legion Scholarship Award of the Mortimer Gibson-Robins Annual Scholarship, and it has been awarded to Rose Callahan.[765.32][765.32](Applause).
Great. I think with no further ado, we will start the articles. And the way we operate the articles here is someone will make a motion as to each article that was in the warrant. Yes, sir. Oh, Michael, I'm sorry. Mike's got an announcement about a coming meeting.
I'll call it a point of order.
Point of order you have.
My name is Michael Manning. I live at 12th and away. I'm Chairman of the Town Administrator Search Committee. I'm here for you today to let you know that on Thursday, the 17th of May, we plan to hold an open public meeting in this hall. It'll be a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator Search Committee to hear from citizens and organizations of the town relative to anything that they would like to impart to us relative to what we ought to be thinking about as we look for a new town administrator. So again, that will be Thursday, 7:00 p.m., this hall, a joint public meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator Search Committee. Thank you.[863.04][863.04](Applause).
Mr. Lombard.
Hopefully, we get a good one.[873.26][873.26](Laughter). I just want to personally thank Jerry and Timmy Load and the entire Public Works for taking care of the grounds of the Town Hall and the inside of the Town Hall. They did a magnificent job, and I think if you give them a round of applause, I'd appreciate it.
I second their motion, for sure. So the way we operate here is there'll be a motion made on each article, and if you wish to speak on the article, you should line up. Typically, people line up in the back to get to a podium. And if you prefer to speak at this podium instead of that podium, it's okay. But people are recognized in the order in which they stand up to speak, and when you get to the podium, whichever one, we're recording this so that it's on...we have a complete record of the town meeting. So you have to speak and say your name and where you live in Nahant. So, and our clerk is desert...oh, no, okay. So with that, we will go to Article Num...oh, first of all, we'll have the annual resolution, which I believe is Mr. Manady.
I move that the town adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the town adopt the following rule governing motions and amendments made during the 2018 annual town meeting. Whereas, without an override, the amount to be raised by taxation as recommended by the Advisory and Finance Committee is expected to be $9,757,639 for fiscal year 2019. And whereas Proposition 2 and 1/2 makes it unlawful for the town to levy taxes in excess of $9,757,639 for the fiscal year 2019 without a vote to override the limit. Therefore, in order to ensure compliance with the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, the participants of the 2018 annual town meeting shall require that anyone introducing a motion at this meeting which would result in an increasing appropriation above the amount permissible under the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2 be obliged to specify the alternative means of funding by giving names of other articles or accounts excluding the reserve fund, and the amount by which the appropriated or recommended amount for such account or articles must be reduced in order to fund the requested increase.
Seconded by Ms. Giordella. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Unanimous vote in favor. Article 2, Mr. Manady.
I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with approval of the selectmen to borrow from time to time in anticipation of revenue in the fiscal year beginning to July 1, 2018, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17, and to authorize treasurer collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements with banking institutions with the approval of the selectmen for fiscal year 2019 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the General Laws.
Seconded by Mr. Van der Slice. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article 3.
I just want to let everyone know that the Finance Committee went over the accounts and transfers for Article 3 prior to this meeting, and we voted to recommend the transfers that I'm just about to read to you. I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the fiscal year 2018 expenses as follows. $14,000 for police department salaries, $50,000 for fire department salaries, $16,762 for town council expenses, $5593 for insurance committee general expenses, $1,000 for Town Hall salaries, $62,000 for selectmen general expenses, $15,000 for town administrator general expenses, $16,154 for town administrator salaries, and $13,000 for DPW salaries and general expenses. And to meet these appropriations, transfer from the following fiscal year 2018 accounts: $5,700 from police department general expenses, $8,300 for police capital, $120,057 from pension and annuity expenses, Essex Regional Retirement Board expense, unemployment compensation, group health and life insurance expense, and Medicare tax expense, and $59,452 from available funds in the Treasury.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the article? So this is an article that awards monies for salaries. And under our bylaw, anything that awards money for salaries has to be a ballot vote. So what I'm looking for right now is eight volunteers to serve as tellers to help us take the ballot votes. Can we have eight volunteers? There's one.[1266.26][1266.26](Laughs) All we need is seven more. Great. There's two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Got enough? Got enough?
Six, seven, eight.
We're handing out, they have to have a stand.
Anybody?
Yeah.
I see your motivation now. I understand.
Yeah.[1542.13][1542.13](Laughter).
Is there...everybody got...put their vote in the box? Is there anyone who doesn't? Come on, okay, we'll get them counted here.
There were three people who didn't know how to vote. What do I do with this? Can I explain it?
No, sometimes it takes a long time. So I told Pete, Pete, I'm going to come over and put it up here.
Oh, yeah, we have to count.
Separate piles for yeses.
Yes.
This one.
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 We have a vote, ladies and gentlemen. Those in favor, one-hundred-and-thirty-one. Those opposed, fourteen. The motion carries. Next motion by Mr., this is number four by Mr. Manetti.
Okay. Again, in this one, there was no recommendation in the FinCom book, but since we've gotten the final numbers in and we as a committee recommend this article for Snow and Ice. I move that the town vote to appropriate one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seven dollars for the fiscal year 2018 Snow and Ice account, that to meet this appropriation, the sum of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seven dollars be funded by available funds in the Treasury.
Seconded by Mr. Fulgham. Is there any way the committee can vote to stop the snow and ice? Further discussion of the article, of the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying yes. Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Thank you. Article five, Mr. Van der Slaas.
All right, before I read Article five, and Article six is the same, just a reminder, in Articles five and six, we are authorizing the amount that we will pay the various employees, but not authorizing the expenditure of it. The expenditure comes in the omnibus under the line items entitled Salaries and Wages. All right, Article five. I move the town vote to amend Article thirteen, Section five, subsection B of the bylaws for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2018, by replacing the existing section with the section under Part One as shown in the Report and Recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on Pages sixteen and seventeen.
Seconded by Mr. Carmangelo. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Unanimous vote in favor. Article six.
Article six. I move that the town vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officials: Selectmen at an annual salary of one dollar; Constable at the annual salary of fifty dollars; Assessors at the annual salary of one dollar; Town Clerk at the annual salary of fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Clausen. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article seven. Mr. Manetti.
This is a typical article we have year after year, and this one will be pretty straightforward because there were no prior fiscal year bills. So I move that the town indefinitely postpone Article seven.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article eight. Mr. Clausen.
I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by borrowing one-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars to pay for the cost of repairing and/or replacing water distribution lines and apparent structures, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such appropriation from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority or any other entity under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section eight, or any other enabling authority, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the MWRA or any other entity related to such loan. And that the Board of Selectmen and any other town official is authorized to take any other action necessary or convey it to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bond or note approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town meeting of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay for cost and capital projects, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the insurance of such bond or note may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Ms. Giudella. Henry, great job of reading that, I'm telling you. I think the smallest book ever written is Poetry by Bond Council.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. By the way, anything dealing with borrowing requires a two-thirds majority vote, but as you know, unanimous includes two-thirds, which I thank you for. Now we come to the omnibus article. And what will happen here, we've got a lot of line items that have to be checked out, and you've got your, I hope you've got your recommendations. So, Mr. Ward, I believe, will read each of the items. And as he goes through the list of the items, we won't stop to discuss any particular item, but if you wish to discuss any particular item, then shout out "hold" or "by" or what? "Pass," that's the one, sorry, "pass," slide up, "pass." Anything you shout out will probably be recognized. So, then at the end of the list, we'll go back to those items that were passed upon, and we will take them up for discussion. Mr. Ward.
All right, you're gonna have to bear with me, this will take quite a while, so I apologize in advance. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the following sums of money for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2019: Moderator, general expenses, sixty dollars; Selectmen's salary, three dollars; General expenses, seventy-six-thousand-one-hundred; Town Administrator's salary and wages, three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety; Health Inspector, ten-thousand-four-forty-five; Public Health Nurse, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-five; Assistant Health Inspector, five-hundred. There's pages and pages. Town Physician, five-hundred; ADA Coordinator, five-hundred; General Expenses, eleven-thousand-eight-hundred; Capital Outlay, two-thousand-nine-hundred, of which, two-thousand-nine-hundred is funded from available funds in the Treasury. Advisory and Finance Committee, general expenses, nine-thousand-five-hundred; Town Accountant, salaries and wages, one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-four; General Expenses, nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventeen; Assessors', salaries, wages, and general expenses, one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-two; Treasurer Collector, salaries, wages, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars; General Expenses, forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-two; Capital Outlay, fourteen-hundred, of which fourteen-hundred is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Town Council Annual Fee, thirty-five thousand; Town Hall's salaries and wages, twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-four, seventy-four; General Expenses, fifty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty; Capital Outlay, zero; Data Processing, salaries, wages, and general expenses, one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-twenty-four; Town Clerk, salaries, wages, and general expenses, sixty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-four; Capital Outlay, one-thousand-four-hundred, of which one-thousand-four-hundred is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Election and Registration, salary, wages, and general expenses, thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-six; Conservation Commission, general expenses, seven-hundred; Planning Board, general expenses, two-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty; Board of Appeals, general expenses, two-thousand-nine-hundred; Police Department, salaries and wages, one-million-three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven; General Expenses, one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty; Capital Outlay, sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred, of which sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Fire Department, salaries and wages, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen; General Expenses, one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-five; Capital Outlay, eighteen-thousand, of which eighteen-thousand is funded from available funds in the Treasury. Bad spot for a staple. Inspectional Services, salary, general expenses, sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty; Building Inspector, salaries and wages, seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-seven; General Expenses, seven-thousand-seven; Plumbing, Gas Inspector, salaries and wages, seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four; General Expenses, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight; Wiring Inspector, salaries and wages, seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four; General Expenses, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-nine; Civil Defense, salaries, wages, and general expenses, nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty; Animal Control, salaries and wages, nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-five; General Expenses, three-thousand-eight-hundred; Parking Clerk, general expenses, thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one; Harbor Master, salaries and wages, three-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-seven; General Expenses, seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty; Capital Outlay, four-thousand-five-hundred, of which four-thousand-five-hundred is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Wharfenger, salaries and wages, one-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-seven; General Expenses, one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two; School Department, salaries and wages, and general expenses, of which five-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-four is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Transportation Expenses, two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty; Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School Assessment, one-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine; Debt Service, four-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-eight; Public Works Snow Removal, thirty thousand; Salaries, Wages, and General Expenses for Public Works Administration, Highways and Streets, Beaches and Parks, Cemetery and Overhead, three-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-nine; Capital Outlay, eight-thousand-five-hundred, of which eight-thousand-five-hundred is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Debt Service, sixty-thousand-and-six dollars; Libraries, salaries and wages and general expenses, two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-three. We're on the last page, we're almost there. Recreation General, salaries, wages, and general expenses, three-thousand-ninety; Recreation Sailing, salaries and wages and general expenses, three-thousand-six-hundred-and-five; Recreation Tennis, salaries, wages, and general expenses, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty; Council on Aging, salaries, wages, and general expenses, fifty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six; Veterans Agent, salaries, wages, and general expenses, fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-four, of which thirty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five of that is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Historical Commission, general expenses, zero; Memorial Day Committee, general expenses, seven-thousand-five-hundred; Fourth of July Committee, general expenses, two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen; Beautification Committee, general expenses, two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-two; Military Housing, general expenses, fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred; Debt, Principal and Interest, three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-one, of which two-hundred-thousand is funded from available funds in the Treasury; Pension and Annuity Expense, Essex Regional Retirement Board Expense, Unemployment Compensation, Group Health and Life Insurance Expense, and Medicare Tax Expense, one-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-sixty-six; Retirement Account, zero; Insurance Committee, general expenses, two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one; The Reserve Fund, one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-four.
Seconded by Mr. Manetti. So I had, I got only one pass, and that was with the Town Administrator Salary Number, I believe. Yes?
Janet Dolan, forty-five Pleasant Street in Nahant. If, what procedure would one make if they wanted to make a comment on the entire omnibus?
The question is, what would, what procedure would you go through to make a comment on the entire omnibus?
Do you make it pass now, or is there discussion where?
I think the discussion would have been at the beginning, but if you have a comment, as a short one, I hope that we can go forward and let's do it.
Okay.
Is it too many pages?
No, 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 I just had a turn to the right spot. It's really an observation and a comment as a taxpayer here in Nahant. And it was with great concern that I read the letter, the introductory letter by the Finance Committee to the people of Nahant. One is the process that was used or occurred to get this budget together. That's one issue. And the other one is the sustainability of the funding that everyone is gonna vote on. So I just, I will, I will make it short and just make this last statement, that it's disturbing that the budget for this town got to the Finance Committee the last week of March. And the time that they had was very, very limited. And I know they do their due diligence, I'm not being critical of that. What I'm saying is, the process was dysfunctional. And to get a budget for the town and to have the Finance Committee have such little time to, to make their recommendation, which they do have a positive recommendation. But as a citizen, it's very disturbing. And I just wanted to make that comment, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to say this, that when I was on the FinCom back in nineteen-eighty-four, five, six, seven, like that, it used to be a battle between the Selectmen and the FinCom as to what dollars and cents would show up before Saturday morning at about ten o'clock. So as bad as this may be, or as hard as it's been for this year, it's still better than it used to be, in my recollection. But I appreciate your comment, thank you very much.
And again, it's nothing critical against the Finance- And again, it's nothing critical against the Finance Committee at all, it's just...
No, we're very proud of our Finance Committee and I know you feel the same way.
Yes.
All right, let's get to the pass.
Jeff Musman, fifteen Tri Mountain Road. My pass was to ask the Finance Committee what assumptions they used in generating the budget for town administrator salaries, wages, in that the range of salary that was proposed and approved in an earlier article maxed out at a hundred and forty-five thousand. This is also fifty percent higher than what was budgeted a year earlier. And I'm, I asked that also in the context of where we are in the search for a replacement town administrator, if you, someone could report on that at the same time. Thank you.
Of course, thank you. So the assumptions that we use, first of all, for those that are unaware of the process, the process is that the selectmen and the town administrator, and this will, will touch on both Jeffrey's point and Janet's point, that the selectmen and the town administrator send to the Finance Committee a budget. The budget is then reviewed by the Finance Committee that was created on, created by the Board of Selectmen and the, and the town administrator, and then it's sent to us for review and recommendation to you. So i- in part, we didn't build any assumptions into the budget. We reviewed a budget that was built by the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. However, I, I think the crux of the question is why is there a difference from last year to this year? And I think additionally, there are pieces in there that are not necessarily on first look would reveal what, what is in that line. So there are two staff people that are associated with the town administrator's office as well as the town administrator. We also have in the interim, an interim town administrator that we'll be paying for as well as a search committee. In terms of, of greater detail on that question, I've been instructed by town council to revert this, or to divert this question to the town administrator through legal counsel who has been provided an answer for further.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Jerry Perry, I'm your new, your interim town administrator. Couple of comments, obviously we're going through a transition period, I can inform you that your budget is balanced, both to close out the current fiscal year and in terms of next fiscal year, absent anything we don't know at this time, that you do have a balanced budget, you would get a tax rate and we will be able to send out the tax bills. With regard to the process, Mr. Manning did mention what's going on in terms of the search for your permanent town administrator. I can tell you that the search committee under the chairman Manning is in place. They are receiving applications as we speak. As I understand it, the deadline is the end of May. They will be working through the month of June and culling out those candidates they deem appropriate to forward to the Board of Selectmen. Their goal is to finish that process by the end of June or certainly by the Fourth of July. Forward those names to the Board of Selectmen, the Selectmen will then go through appropriate interviews and, and subject to contractual negotiations coupled with appropriate background investigations. Hopefully by the end of the summer, the goal is to have a new town administrator in place here for the town in Nahant. So I hope that's answered Mr. Musman's questions.
I didn't...
Mrs., yes, please.
My, my name's Terry Motley.
Yes, Terry.
And I live at Six Carey Street, and this is just a question. I noticed that the Personnel Committee has no budget, and I'm wondering with the turbulence in people's tenure with the town, why that function is being not used?
I'll, I'll address on that. You may recall several years ago, the Finance Committee recommended to the town and to the Board of Selectmen that the Department of Revenue be engaged in a consulting agreement to, through the Division of Local Services. And the Division of Local Services came in and gave a comprehensive audit of the town's management and the town response, and the town's functioning at that point. One of the, the main points in the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services review was that committees that were set up by our charter, long before we enacted the special act that created the town administrator, that had become no longer needed, should be removed from the town charter. And as you look at the Division of Local Services, their review was recommending that that be removed and it, I believe the Board of Selectmen had not acted on that, it still sits there dormant. But the, the crux behind that is that the Town Administrator Act itself creates in the Town Administrator a, an HR head capacity, and that negated the need for a Personnel Committee. So best practices in local government, according to the Division of Local Services, who, who manage and give out technical assistance to local communities, have recommended that we not use that and that we eventually amend our bylaws and hopefully the next time we have a bylaw charter commission, that will be something that they look at. They, they recommended that along with several other dormant committees that, that should be removed from the bylaws.
But if you have the town administrator functioning as the Personnel Committee head.
Mm-hmm.
Who deals with the total personnel situation under which the town administrator functions?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
There is a Personnel Board that's advisory, but the, the town administrator has taken over by statute what was done by their previous Personnel Board. There is now a Personnel Board to whom I've appointed some members, but they're voluntary and don't have a budget.
I see. I'm just wondering if that's wise? Perhaps consulting might help because obviously we've got a really difficult situation on our hands here and maybe local people are not going to be able to do it without help.
Thank you for your comment. Pete.
Pete Rogers, forty-four Pearl Road. This is in response to Brendan's response to one of Jeff's questions, and that is about the two additional personnel attached to the salary line item of the town administrator. For years and years, people have been confused by that and have gotten a sense of the largesse of the town in terms of the salary of the town administrator. Wouldn't it just be simpler to break out those two positions separately, at least for the reporting in the book? We had a similar problem, I haven't caught up with it, but I believe in the principal's office at the school, that they've got a bottom line budget as we know, but there were office personnel attached to that salary line item that made that salary look misleadingly high. And it seems to me there's such a simple solution to this that at least you could put a notation in the book explaining that.
I, I see your point, unfortunately, I'm not sure procedurally how we could do that given the way that municipal accounting works. I mean, I guess we could look into starring it as a footnote or something like that. It's certainly something that we'll take into consideration and if you could remind me at another time, maybe it would be easier for me to remember, remember to add that. But, but I think based on, on the, the core principles of municipal accounting and I'd certainly defer to the town accountant to correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that the way that our budget and our, our financial reporting that we have to go, give back to the state requires it to fall into the buckets that it has.
Thank you, next comment.
Veronica Cock, nineteen Fox Hill Road. You were saying that it was always, is it always the town administrators' extra staff in the line item?
Yes.
So there's a huge jump. And when Jerry answered the question, I, maybe I'm slow, but fifty percent increase in the town administrator payment doesn't match up. It has nothing to do with, it's still a big jump from last year and you've always had those administrative people in there, so where's the jump?
Once again, I've been instructed to turn that over to the town interim town administrator, who's been advised by legal counsel.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I just didn't understand your answer at all.
Welcome to Nahant, huh? Okay.
As taxpayers, we have a right to know.
Absolutely, and I'm going to give you your answer.
Okay.
I've been advised by town council to give the following statement regarding to your specific question, okay? The statement is as follows, "The town and Mr. Chelgren have agreed to part ways and go in different directions. Mr. Chelgren will be on a period of leave until April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and then resigning his position with the town. We thank Jeff for his service to the town and wish him all of the best in his future endeavors. The additional costs to the town required by this agreement is approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars. It would, it would not be appropriate to comment on this agreement or any personnel matter any further here at this town meeting. The Board of Selectmen believe that reaching this agreement was in the best interest of the town and Mr. Chelgren. We thank Mr. Chelgren for his service."
Do I have a right to a copy of that agreement as a taxpayer of the town?
Yes.
And how do I request that?
You can request a Freedom of Information request through the town clerk's office.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, further discussion on the administrative salary pass. Seeing and hearing none, I think we're ready for a vote and because there are all kinds of salaries obviously messed up in this whole thing, we will need to call forward our sterling tellers so that we can have a ballot vote on this issue. Please come forward, thank you all. So we have one more volunteer, one more volunteer. Come up, come ahead, here we go.
How are you?
I went to the last one, but... What about the possibility putting all this stuff online a month before the time being so people can actually look at it in detail?
Well, we usually take four minutes after.
I've got two of them, the one that matches up with what they're stating now.
A lot of times there's, uh, information that comes out.
Did you get your Zanita?
I did, yeah, thank you.
I love your gray pie scent, I think mine are all dead from plumbing.
They're online. You don't have to pay the expense of sending them home.
Looks like maybe not, looks like they're not.
Can you shouldn't be here anymore.
Dude, I got that I do in summer, a couple of years ago. I'm probably just doing some better than Hollywood. You end up getting a bronze extra. And there, it was pretty, really good at it.
Have a lot of confidence in wearing those socks. They saw Skrip had blue ones. The two of them, you gotta kick out of the office.
I mean, he's a registered, if he's a registered, if he's not a registered.
Sired, but I, not really sure, I stopped at the police service. This year now that I am. Or just about to be.
I lost time to make a decision. No, no, sorry. Another situation, uh, Erby and Or, Erby and Orby. On the floor, not on the roof. Oh wait, and so we, you were talking to.
My son's right off the door at nine thirty, he's off the door at three thirty this morning. Big door, uh, protein. We have one drop on five, six drop. That's about it, let's move on. I'm ninety percent thirty-five. We put something in the ground. Four digits.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a vote. Those in favor, one hundred and fifty. Those opposed, twenty-six. The motion carries. Mr. Clausen.
I move that the following sums to be appropriated for the water and sewer enterprise fund for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Salaries, four hundred and four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three. Expenses, one million, forty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty. Capital outlay, zero. Debt, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, thirty-three dollars. Emergency reserve, uncollectible, forty thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total of, two million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that the, and that, one million, seven hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-one is raised by the following: water and sewer department receipts for a total of, one million, seven hundred and ten dollar, ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-one.
Seconded by Mr. Manady. Further discussion on the article. Seeing and hearing none, I have, and this involves four hundred thousand dollars worth of salaries. So, our wonderful teller crew is going to have to come up yet again, just when you thought it was safe. Could we have the tellers come forward again? Thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Voted, we voted, thank you, man. But if it comes up, I'll ask you to.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a vote. Those in favor, one hundred and seventy. Those opposed, four. The motion carries. What a great turnout for this town meeting, too. I appreciate everybody coming.
I move that the town vote to appropriate from available funds in the water and sewer enterprise fund, thirty thousand dollars to pave roads and sidewalks throughout town, including all costs incidental or related thereto.
Seconded by Mr. Orangelo. Further discussion on the motion.
Uh, do not get this article confused with the regular paving. This is intended to repair wherever water repair work is done, if you have a sewer break or whatever, to repave the road or sidewalk. We're trying to separate what's truly spent by water and sewer from the DPW's, uh, funds.
Further discussion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. You know, I must vote in favor. Article twelve, Mr. Clausen.
I move that the town, I move that the following sum is, yeah. I'll start over again. I'll move that the following sum to be appropriated for the rubbish enterprise fund for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Salaries, five thousand, yeah, salaries, fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Expenses, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. Debt, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. For a total of, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that, the four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-six is raised from the following: rubbish department receipts, four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty. Usage of available funds, twenty thousand, seven hundred and six. For a total of, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Fulgham. Further discussion on the article, on the motion. Now, can I ask for a rousing round of applause for our tellers? Our tellers! Come on back up. This will be the last of the salary thing, so we'll have our tellers one more time. We're overworking our tellers this year, I'm afraid. All right, is there anyone who has not deposited their vote?
Enterprise Fund, the sum of ten thousand dollars for material removal and improvement of the composting facility, including the payment of all costs incidental or related
David Walsh, Levin Fox Hill. Is this, every year we have the same ten thousand dollars. Is this ten thousand really going to remove all of the compost that's there since it's illegal to leave it there for the year?
The answer is no. What the plan is for the ten thousand dollars which will effectively occur after July one is prior to the, sometime before June thirtieth, the Public Works plans on chipping a lot of the wood that's down there, and then on July one they're going to begin turning over some of the loom and trying to make it better. At the instruction of the Board of Selectmen, I have begun studying what we can do on a larger scale picture in terms of how to handle the dump. Currently as it exists, we do not have the resources to do what you're suggesting, and I agree with that, but we're looking at opportunities, grants, and enterprise funds to see if we can begin the process going forward on an annual basis to clean out the dump properly, and it's something I'm personally working with. I am in the process, starting next week, to interview new DPW superintendents, and that's one of the agenda items I'll be doing during the course of my interviews, so we are looking at doing that.
Thank you for your explanation.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article fifteen, Mr. Clausen.
I, fourteen, I'm sorry. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from available funds received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in fiscal year twenty nineteen, a sum of ninety-one thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars, and any additional funds thereafter received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in fiscal year twenty nineteen, in order to accomplish certain highway construction and maintenance under the provisions of General Law, Chapter ninety, Section thirty-four, or Chapter two oh six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six, Section two.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slaas. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article fifteen.
This is going to be another long one like the first one I read. I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise from borrowing a sum of eighty thousand dollars to pay for the cost of paving roads and sidewalks throughout town, including the costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow eighty thousand dollars under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, subsection one, I believe, of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premiums received upon the sale of any bond or note approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town meeting that authorized the borrowing of money to pay for cost of capital projects, less any other premium applied to the payment of the cost of insurance of any sort of bond or note, may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by the vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
The only correction I would have is instead of insurance, it was issuance of such bonds or notes, but I think it's clear from the reading. Seconded by Mr. Man, I had the wrong one, Manady, thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article sixteen. Mr. Corangelo.
I move that the town pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, continue the special account for the Council on Aging for the fiscal year starting July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. For the purpose of offsetting in part or in aggregate the annual ordinary operating costs of the Council on Aging, set account to accept revenues generated from user fees, charges from senior activities and events, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars in expenses during fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article sixteen. Mr. Corangelo.
I move that the town pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, continue the special account for the Council on Aging for the fiscal year starting July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. For the purpose of offsetting in part or in aggregate the annual ordinary operating costs of the Council on Aging, set account to accept revenues generated from user fees, charges from senior activities and events, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars in expenses during fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the article? I would just like to comment what a wonderful job our Council on Aging does, and I was remiss in not announcing that they had wonderful hot dogs downstairs, but I ate most of them before the meeting anyway. So, at any rate.
They're sold out, Dave.
I'm sure they are. So, at any rate, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article seventeen. Mr. Corangelo.
I move that the town vote to continue to allow the town to have a special revolving account utilizing revenues from burial opening fees, cremation fees, and grief stone setting fees, and to authorize said funds to be expended in fiscal year two thousand nineteen by the Public Works Department for maintenance, operation, and capital improvements of the Green Lawn Cemetery pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one-half. The total expenditure is not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slaas. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Unanimous vote in favor. Article eighteen, Mr. Fulgham.
I move that the town vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three D, thereby reauthorizing parks and recreation revolving accounts for general recreation: basketball, sailing, tennis, Fourth of July, tot lots, playground equipment, and for the youth commission.
Seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Further discussion on the motion?
This is standard accounting practice, something that we do every year, and it allows for the fees and the expenses for each of those respective recreation programs to be tracked and managed.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article nineteen, Ms. Giardella. Giardella.
I move that the town vote to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby allowing the premiums received by the town to be applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, and may apply such premiums to the project costs. This is something that is allowed by the State of Massachusetts.
Seconded by Mr. Clausen. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty.
This is a bit long, so bear with me. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars to pay the town share, along with a matching grant of four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, three, four hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars, of the cost of purchasing a new fire truck, including the costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars under General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and extend, expend, any federal or state aid available for the project. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of the money to pay the costs of capital projects, less any such premium applied to the payment of those costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Mr. Manady. Further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this article deals with borrowing roughly fifty thousand dollars, that's our share of, you know, a roughly five hundred thousand dollar new fire truck. Firefighter Austin Antrim, sitting right there, did another outstanding job in So, this new engine, that doesn't yet have a number, will replace Engine thirty-two, which is a thirty-eight-year-old Mack truck that we purchased used from Long Island. It's served the town well, but it's time for it to move on. So, we'll have the new engine, we'll have Engine thirty-one that was purchased in two thousand and four, and our relatively new ladder truck that was purchased in two thousand and one, or two thousand and eleven. So, those are the three mainline fire apparatus that we'll have once we approve this article.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-one. Mr. Fulgham.
Okay, another long bond language-related exercise. I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by borrowing the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to pay the cost of purchasing a temporary structure to house a new fire truck, including the cost incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow seventy-five thousand dollars under General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of the money to pay costs of capital projects, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws. Thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Pete Barber, Twenty-two Emeralds Road. Just a quick question of why we would look to purchase a seventy-five thousand dollar building when we could probably make adjustments to the current fire station to fit the engine in? And follow-up question is, what do we do with this structure at some point when we do get an engine to fit in the building?
So, those are all good and fair questions. So, the new engine, there's a slight, maybe miswording in one of the things that I read. The new engine will go into the fire station where Engine thirty-one currently lives. Engine thirty-two, the engine that we're replacing, is in that rear custom-built bay on the back of the station. So, once Engine thirty-two goes away, Engine thirty-one, that's losing its home in the main garage, will not fit in that rear, rear spot. It's a, it's a fire truck that's full of water, it needs to stay in an environment that's heated over the winter, the pumps can't freeze, the tanks can't freeze, so we need to find a new home for Engine thirty-one. So, the town has looked into, trying to see if it will fit in any of the DPW bays or some other place that we already have, and that is not going to work. So, the solution for the temporary structure is, you know, obligated by the fact that we're going to get this new engine, you know, thanks to Austin's efforts. So, that's the solution that the town has come up with. The structure should last for at least ten years. It probably has a life closer to twenty years. The DPW has been involved in the conversations and the decision and believes that there will be future uses for it, so it's not, you know, it's not, it's temporary, but it's going to be an enduring structure that's not going to go to waste.
Mr. Rogers? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, the town administrator, Mr. Perry.
Yeah. Just to further elaborate, kind of a financial issue, we have to be careful about debt ratios, how much money we borrow in relationship to our overall general fund. And the three hundred thousand dollars that was considered for studying of the fire station was going to kick us up and over the debt ratio. So, that's why, from a financial perspective, it's been decided to do this on a temporary basis, and we could consider some other options for the temporary basis, but we had to house the equipment and protect the equipment against, you know, the elements, especially in the hunt, and as such, a lot of this has to do with finances. The long-range goal is we're going to try to develop capital improvement planning as we go forward, look at our debt ratios, whether we need debt exclusions to help our infrastructure, something has to be decided, but from my perspective, as your town administrator... something has to be decided, but from my perspective, as your town administrator, I think the prudent approach is to do it this way right now, let's figure out our finances as we go forward and try to do the right thing so we don't spend money either needlessly or jeopardize our fiduciary position within town as it relates to the debt ratio of the community. So, that's another factor why the Finance Committee recommended to do what they did, which I concur with them.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Pete Rogers, forty-four Pearl Road. It says in the FinCom book that the temporary structure will have room for two pieces of equipment. Physically, where will this new building go, and what will it displace in the meantime? And is there any further use for it after it's done housing fire trucks?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the prior vote for the funding for the engine, which has brought us to this discussion. The question that you brought up, sir, has been a point of discussion that's still ongoing. We have several locations under consideration, all in proximity to the fire station and the DPW building. At this point, notice, final decision has been made as to the definite location for the temporary structure, but it will be in that area. As far as displacement of other things, right now, the only thing we're looking at displacing is some parking.
Further discussion on the motion?
I'll also point out the fact that the Finance Committee, in our discussions and in our book, have made the point that the town needs to have a more coherent, proactive capital planning process, and, you know, the situation that we're in with the arrival of the new engine points to the flaws that we have. Having said that, there's still, over the last few years, there has been a committee in place that's been looking at the current state of the fire station. At town meeting in two thousand and sixteen, there was a CPC grant that was approved and executed to kind of study the existing facility and point out its kind of flaws and started us on the process of figuring out what to do next. So, that committee is still involved and meeting regularly and working to solve the problem, and hopefully, we can do that in the coming months to put a long-term solution in place.
Mr. Warren.
Thank you. I think what's important in this piece is to, for the people that may not know what isn't in the warrant, so when the Finance Committee first received the warrant from the town, there were significantly more articles looking to take on significantly more debt. As we deliberated with the town, a lot of those found their way off as we decided that we either couldn't afford them, and they would be nice projects if we, you know, had a lot of money and had nothing else to spend it on, but given our limited resources and the position that we're currently in, this was a compromise. So, we need a short-term solution for the current situation. There was a warrant article, as was alluded to, that had been on here for a three hundred thousand dollar study to create a fire station at some point that could be anywhere from three million to five million, and we weren't sure when we'd be able to afford to spend three or five million to build a new fire station, and we weren't sure where the plans were headed. So, in an effort to save all of us from having to fund that at this point, or have to fund it multiple times, as we could do the study now, and when the study came back, realize we can't afford it, and punt it a little while longer, and then have to do it again, and have the cost increase, and have wasted that money. So, in an effort to make sure that something that is needed, hopefully, all of us recognize that if we need to call nine-one-one and have the fire department show up, we want a fire truck that isn't frozen and the pumps work. So, this was what that was, but I think the important part, and what the Finance Committee spent the most time doing, was trying to look at the things that you don't see before you today. There was a lot of effort put on by us to remove things that, at this point, although great, and would probably be nice for us to do, we just can't afford. So, this was, and we hope you will support, a temporary structure to house this fire truck and apparatus until we can figure out what the right plan is there, and hopefully, the committee that has been created will look at that and will look specifically at the fire station. And as we've mentioned, you know, there will be funds that will need to be spent at some time in the future, but we've advised that those funds should only be spent when we know we can afford to do the project, because under state procurement laws, if you have a building project of a certain amount, you have to spend ten percent of that in the planning and design process. So, we have to expend that money in order to design a project, and we're not comfortable that in the next year or two years, that we'd be able to afford three to five million to build a fire department, especially as we go through the warrant, you'll see other things. So, this was a great short-term solution to hedge us until we can find something that works for the town of Nahant, and that, you know, maybe it is renovating the current one, that's what this committee will look at, and they'll certainly, and as our representative from the Finance Committee, John Fulgham, is on that committee to make sure that you, as the voters, and your taxes are being considered when we're looking at these projects, and hopefully, it will be something that we can afford.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-two. Ms. Giridella.
I apologize, this is another long one. I move that the town vote to appropriate a hundred and seven thousand dollars to purchase two pickup trucks and pertinent fixtures, that to meet this appropriation, ten thousand five hundred dollars shall be transferred from rubbish enterprise fund, available funds, and the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars under General Law forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action or convenient, or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Mr. Fulgham. Further discussion on the motion? You know, I feel bad that I was making fun of Bond Council before. Can you imagine how hard they had to study in order to be able to speak like that? Think like that? I don't know. Anyway, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Thank you. Article twenty-three. Mr. Corangelo.
So, I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by borrowing the sum of four million ninety thousand five hundred dollars to pay the cost of improvement to the Nahant sewer infrastructure, including the costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow four million ninety thousand five hundred dollars under General Laws Chapter forty-four, Section eight, of the general laws or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay such costs of capital projects, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Mr. Clausen.
So, we've got the town engineer here to speak. There's also a handout that was at the tables coming that gives a very high-level explanation of what's entailed. There's also a four hundred something-ish page book that's analyzing and basically making some recommendations for what a longer-term view would look like. If you'll read through what we've written in the book, we are obviously in support of this vote, which is expending an amount, which is the first step to establish a plan and really to do some of the diagnosis. There's some high-tech video stuff of robots crawling through pipes to see what we actually have, but once that's in place, there's a much longer-term view to this, and while we support this expenditure, we are hesitant to commit further without a few things, you know, in place. One of those is a long-term DPW director supervisor, whatever we're calling the new title. One would be a town administrator that's got some, you know, expected timeframe to cover this, but also a body, and we mentioned earlier in the meeting, some boards that exist in the charter or committees that exist in the charter that don't exist in practicality. One of those is a capital planning committee. Whether it's that body or some other oversight body that literally has a ten-to-twenty-year time horizon, because that's the sorts of times that we're looking at, having that timeframe in mind while we make these incremental decisions is very important. In addition to that, there's also a short-term thing, which is for any of these, the day-to-day management of these projects, some are large, some small, are really not, it's hard to do that on top of your day job as DPW director, or whatever the role may be. For the amounts that we're talking, we feel it's very, it would be prudent to have a project manager representing the town overseeing these in an informal way. So, all that said, there's a lot of good ideas here, there are people in town who have expertise, who have worked in and around water and sewer systems in much larger communities. There was one brief ad hoc committee set up to do that, which was great, that has not yet continued, but there are resources within the town to help provide other points of view in addition to what Mr. Cockland's come up with, and that is no disrespect or any evaluation of what they have come up with, it is just, there's this one opinion, and there are others that may be worth hearing. So, with that, I'll shut up.
Further discussion of the motion? Mr. Taylor.
I concur a hundred percent with what Ken has just said. As your next chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I am going to make sure that we follow through with this. I've talked with Ken at length. It's very, very, very important, there's an awful lot of money here, and by the time this is done, well, maybe I won't be here, I don't know, but it's, this is ongoing, ongoing, and I discussed this with them earlier, like, oh gee, it's sort of like my first job, I was a teacher and you're kind of, but you know what, with this amount of money, we do have to have checks and balances, we really do. So, on my end with the Board of Selectmen, they were a hundred percent with me too, we're going to refine this committee, if there are people out there, I am not an engineer, but I can put the committee together, so I'm a hundred percent with them. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This is a borrowing article, so it requires a two-thirds vote. I did hear a no, so I'm going to call for the no votes to stand, and then we'll try the yea votes and see whether we have two-thirds. Those against, two? Would those in favor please stand? Those in favor, a hundred and fifty-six. Thank you very much.
This next article is water distribution infrastructure, which would, it's my understanding, would help to alleviate some of the issues we have with flooding in certain areas. I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by borrowing the sum of a hundred and five thousand one hundred dollars to pay the costs of improvements to the Nahant water distribution infrastructure, including the costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow one hundred and five thousand one hundred dollars under General Law Chapter forty-four, Section eight of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Mr. Manady. Further discussion of the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-five. Community preservation article. Ms. Spencer.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Spencer, and I have the pleasure of being the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. So, I'm going to give you a brief introduction to this program, which has benefited the town of Nahant since two thousand and five, the year after it was approved in two thousand and four. Community preservation is a program that operates on the basis of a tax surcharge, which is matched by the state for the benefit of three different subject areas. Ten percent of the funds are allocated to historic preservation, ten percent to affordable housing, and ten percent to open space. The balance can be allocated by the town meeting as recommended by the committee's recommendations. Since two thousand and five, over four point three million dollars has been appropriated and spent on a variety of projects here in Nahant, most of them municipally related, so it's a very significant source of support for town-owned properties and open space. This year, the Community Preservation Committee has been graced by an outstanding committee, and that committee has fulfilled the requirements of the enabling legislation by soliciting community input and holding open meetings to receive proposals, as they're presented in Article twenty-five. The role of the Community Preservation Committee is to facilitate the review of funding requests and to make recommendations to the Advisory and Finance Committee and Town Meeting. Only voters can approve appropriations. The recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee are listed as A through L on Article twenty-five and will be presented individually. The town meeting may accept and meant to reduce or reject the motion made for each one of the recommendations. Alternative proposals cannot be offered under the Act's provisions, nor can amounts be made in the motion to be increased. Voters should be aware that, in general, the allocation of community preservation funds, based on any future... based on any future recommendations, should have no direct input, impact on the town's budget or general financial condition. The Community Preservation Act has its own dedicated revenue source consisting of a local property tax surcharge and state matches from the Community Preservation Act Trust Fund. Funds raised cannot be spent, including the state match, that funds raised but not spent, excuse me, including the state match, may be set aside for later appropriations in accordance with Community Preservation Act requirements.
Mr. Taylor. Yes, go ahead. All right, thank you, sir.
I move that the town subdivide Article twenty-five in accordance with the town's bylaws.
Are there seven voters who are in favor of, actually, I think there are seven members on the committee, and they're all voters, but all we need is seven voters to divide this divisible article. Could seven voters stand up, please? We got 'em. Thank you very much. The article will be divided and discussed in individual sections. First, Mr. Manady.
I move that the town appropriate for the payment of debt service, principal, and interest due and owing on the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar Town Wharf bonding authorized by the two thousand and eight annual town meeting, Article eleven F, the sum of sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And to fund this appropriation, the sum of seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars shall come from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues, the sum of forty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars shall come from Community Preservation Open Space Reserves, and the sum of fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars shall come from Community Preservation General Reserves.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slice. Further discussion on the motion.
As it says in the FinCom book, this is, you know, the final year of a ten-year bond for the Town Wharf project, and so, next year, our obligations to this bond will be over, and we'll be able to use funds for other great projects in town.
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Mr. Manady.
Article twenty-five B. I move that the town set aside from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues for later appropriation, twenty-five thousand one hundred and eight dollars for community housing, community preservation purposes of the town to be maintained in the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Reserve.
Seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Further discussion on the motion. Mr. Rogers. Are you discussing? No? Okay. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Mr. Manady, Article twenty-five C.
I move that the town appropriate five thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues for administrative and operating expenses of the Community Preservation Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Mr. Manady. The ayes, the ayes have it unanimously. Mr. Manady.
I move that the town appropriate twenty-seven thousand and twenty dollars for the fifth year of a five-year project, reserve and digitize the town's records, and to fund this, twenty-seven thousand and twenty dollars appropriation from the Community Preservation Fund General Reserves.
Seconded by Mr. Clausen. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Mr. Manady.
I move that the town appropriate five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund selective priority building envelope repairs of the Nahant Public Library.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slice. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor.
Article twenty-five F. I move that the town appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund selective priority building envelope repairs of the Nahant Public Library.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slice. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Mr. Manady.
Article twenty-five G. I move that the town appropriate forty-five thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund selective priority building envelope repairs to the Town Hall, the Public Library, and Ellingwood Chapel. This also includes an allocation for architectural participation in preparing scope of project documents, assessing contractor submissions, and overseeing the work contracted. It is anticipated that projects for the Public Library, Town Hall, and Ellingwood Chapel will be grouped together for architectural services and possibly for the construction work itself.
Seconded by Mr. Fogum. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-five H.
I move that the town appropriate one hundred and twelve thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund the preservation of the Ellingwood Chapel for critical masonry work, and to serve as a town's portion of matching funds pursuant to a grant application to the Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund administered by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and in connection therewith to authorize the Board of Selectmen, after a public hearing with a minimum of seven days' notice, to enter into a preservation restriction with the Mass Historical Commission for Ellingwood Chapel.
Seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-five I, Mr. Manady.
I move that the town appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fund the restoration of the walkway in front of the Nahant Community Center, and to fund this appropriation, the sum of eight thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars shall come from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues, and eleven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars shall come from the Community Preservation General Reserves.
Seconded by Mr. Clausen. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-five J.
I move that the town appropriate seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund the replacement of the gangway at the Wharf.
Seconded by Ms. Giradella. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article twenty-five K.
I move that the town appropriate ten thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues to fund the comprehensive survey and assessment of Nahant's wetlands and related professional services as applied for by the town of Nahant.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slice. Further discussion on this motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Article twenty-five L.
I move that the town set aside revenues from fiscal year two thousand and nineteen Community Preservation Fund revenues for later appropriation in any other amount not otherwise set aside or appropriated as aforesaid to be maintained in the Community Preservation Fund General Reserves account.
Seconded by Mr. Fogum. Further discussion of the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Pete, were you wishing to discuss that last motion?
After we're done with this article, I have a point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Point of information. Is it a quick one?
A clarification.
Okay.
But not on this article.
Is it on?
So, I'm just waiting in line.
Oh. Well, is it on an article, Pete?
Yes, it is. It, if I may, has to do with Article twenty-three, which we've already passed, and it states that they're supporting a capital program committee, which I agree with, and it stipulates how many people should be on it, their terms of office, who appoints them, and so on and so forth, and says that the specifics, the full article is, as an appendix, we recommend this committee be immediately reconstituted, both to provide oversight work and so on and so forth. In voting in the affirmative for Article twenty-three, did we vote specifically to reconstitute that committee? Because I can't find the appendix with the full article, which raises a point that's come up before. Toward the tail end of town meeting, we always vote to renew the existing committees, and a decision has been made from the chair that new committees cannot be gratuitously added to that list without having appeared as warrant articles in the warrant earlier. Just a technical question, since this is resuscitating a once-existing committee, would it get in under there, or have we already approved it? Is everything copacetic on this?
Well, I am copacetic on it.
Okay.
But we did not have anything in the motion for twenty-three that dealt with reestablishing or establishing a new committee, as I.
So, that is not part of the article we voted for?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Ms. Giradella.
Sorry about that. Regarding the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of the Municipal Modernization Act amended Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-one, Section one eleven F, to establish a Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund.
Seconded by Mr. Fogum.
No questions?
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Article twenty-seven, Mr. Corangelo.
I move that the town indefinitely postpone Article twenty-seven.
Seconded by Mr. Ward.
Further discussion? Step to the microphone, give your name and where you live. Yeah, my name's George Mahoven, and I live in Lenox Road in Nahant, and I'm just curious of the motion itself. I read the article and why it wants to be indefinitely postponed. I am for some kind of article or bylaw that permit, prevents the contractors from working past a set time and working on Sundays. Living over a little in Nahant, it's very crowded over there, and there's been so many instances where contractors have been working way past five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. A couple weeks ago, across the street from my house, they were working on their house contractors on Easter Sunday. So, I'm a little confused on why they want to indefinitely postpone this. Is the article not written properly? Is there a noise ordinance? Do we have to make it a bylaw? And who do I speak to, to talk to about this article to see if we can't rewrite it or whatever for the next town meeting, to try to get it into the bylaws so we can stop these contractors? And a lot of them don't even have names on their vehicles, so you don't even know who's who working on these homes and so on and so forth. It's very annoying, and you sit down for supper, saws going, blowers going, you know, this going, that going. So, I think the town should do something about that. I guess, what I can gather is that it's not written properly, because I guess there's no noise ordinance in Nahant, and who has the right to go tell the contractor to stop working? I don't think it should be the building inspector, I think it should be the police that go out and say, hey, listen, we have a bylaw or an ordinance, whatever you want to call it, that you aren't supposed to be working past a certain time. So, who do we, who do I talk to? And who brought up this stuff? So, I could talk to them and figure out what we can do, if we can do something, to rearrange it or rewrite it to make it so it is a voluble article.
So, two things. First, in order to craft it with language that will, you know, that addresses the issues that we had with the language and the legal parts of it, our town administrator, Mr. Perry, has volunteered for.
Yeah, I know, Mr. Perry, I went to school with him.
Just in terms of the concept of the noise ordinance, the one, the one that was listed as written, and it's on page one hundred sixteen of the books, it does talk about contractors, it doesn't talk about things that are in other communities. For instance, you know, if I want to mow my lawn on a Saturday at six P.M. as a homeowner, is that allowed? Is that not allowed? There's some stuff in there that isn't covered that is covered in other communities, you know, bylaws.
Which I don't have any problem with. Being a homeowner is one thing, and then having a full crew working at ten o'clock at night with saws going is not, you know, not happy, I'm not happy with that. You know, I pay taxes like everybody else in this town, and this town is a very peaceful and quiet town, and it's, it's just not, not a good thing.
Understood.
So, I just wanted to say something about it and point to who I can speak to after you indefinitely postpone it, so we can maybe get together and rewrite it so we can make it a law. So, I'm sure other people are annoyed by this also. I'm sure I'm not the only one. So, I just wanted to say something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Yes, sir. Amend a motion to indefinitely postpone? No. You have to defeat it and then raise a new motion if you wish, but the motion to indefinitely postpone is a main motion and has, is not amendable. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Yes, Mr. Ward.
Richard first? Am I gonna call Richard first? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Article twenty-eight deals with a zoning article, and the law requires that before we deal with a zoning article, we get a report from the planning committee. And Mr. Snyder is here to provide just such a report.
Consistent with my past performances, this cannot cost anybody anything.
So we can all relax. This was brought before the planning board by the Board of Selectmen. And it would affect property of the same nature throughout the town, including the property out where Northeastern is. The referral was made and a hearing was held on February 23, 2018. And we accepted the referral and voted to hold a public hearing. Notices of a public hearing were held on February 26, 2018, and March 5, 2018. And a hearing was held on March 20. At the hearing, the general view was that this could be a very important bylaw for the town of Nahant. The purpose of the particular bylaw is to create a town-managed process by which major events relating to sensitive, ecologically sensitive areas would be handled. There is a parallel course that goes through the Conservation Commission. This would go through the Zoning Board of Appeals, and a special permit would be required. The purpose of the introduction was to make them roughly parallel, but to provide the town with a greater element of control of its own destiny, rather than appealable to a bureaucratic process. It would be appealable through our own Zoning Board of Appeals and then ultimately to the court if necessary, where presumably our own determination would have the benefit of the doubt. In the course of the public hearing, a number of issues arose. This is now turning to my perception of it. Few of them had anything to do with the general idea, which seemed to be acceptable. Most of them had to do with the process. People were concerned that, as I understand it, that either cutting grass, a bird looking for a worm, or like small acts would be covered within the purview unintentionally. It was the intention of the proponents that that not be the case, that it not be any more intrusive than most existing things, but it simply return the enforcement of such a bylaw to the town. The board voted without dissent, yes. And the purpose of the vote was to move the matter forward so that this process or this bylaw could come into effect. And once a notice is given of a proposed zoning bylaw, it freezes for a period of time what people can do. And the purpose was to maintain the freeze so that we could continue forward and enact something that would be for the benefit of the town. And so the planning board voted to move forward, understanding that there could be legitimate issues as to whether in its, in the form we enacted it, or recommended it, I should say, because only you can enact it, additional work on the bylaw might be required. This is Nahant, as somebody said, and there were all kinds of people who met for all kinds of purposes, some of which I was told about and some of which I wasn't, which is probably a wise move. My wife does that all the time. And we were approached recently to say, hey, look, would you be willing to look more carefully at this and maybe give us a better proposition that's not perceived as threatening the songbirds of Nahant in coming up with worms and things? And our answer was, by vote this morning, again, without dissent, that should you decide, rather than deal with it today in a way in which it's maybe less than perfect, to send it back to us, to come back with a more refined proposal, we'd be happy to do so. And if you choose to do that, we would, of course, hold public hearings so that everybody would get a chance to talk about it. There are various committees in town, again, some of which are known and some of which are deep state, apparently. And we said we would be happy to listen to any committee with a name, and even those without a name. And we would be happy to listen to any person. So should somebody care to move this forward with a motion to send it back to us for further work, we would be happy to do that. Such constitutes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Point of information, please.
Mr. Snyder, could you just confirm that what you have just said is a favorable report from the planning board? Taking that not as an insult, but as a, as a fair comment on my usual methodology. Yes, I can confirm that.
Thank you. Mr. Ward.
All right. I move that the town refer the bylaw amendment, wetland permits, back to the planning board for further review and study.
Seconded by Mr. Manady. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Marilyn Goodrich, 25 Summer Street, Nahant. I was at the planning board meeting, the open meeting, and it, from my reading of what was presented at that meeting to us and from reading today, it's been significantly revised, from what I've read that was handed today. It seems that in the revision, that many of the points that are brought up in the in the open meeting before the planning committee have been addressed and been resolved. Specifically homeowners, trees in their yards, mowing, whatever. And I feel strongly that this is a very important. The wetlands are extremely important to us, every single person here. I mentioned at the planning board, before the planning board, I got up and spoke that a colleague of mine from MIT, a very renowned energy scientist, was asked to do a survey of this town in connection with an energy impact from a gas project. And when I spoke to her recently, she said, you know, the sea levels are only going to rise, the storms are going to get fiercer, your coasts are going to erode. We're a very small rock, five miles out in the ocean, and we have to really think seriously about the wetlands. They are our protection against flooding. I think as this, to my reading, as the, as this has been amended, it seems fair. It seems reasonable. And, you know, a moment's reflection back to the March storm should switch anyone's mind as to the importance of the wetlands. They absorb water. Paved, large parking lots do not absorb water. We, I didn't sleep for four nights. I was waiting to be evacuated. The flood came 10 feet from my door. This is, this is a serious matter. And I, as a, just a, just a simple person, think it, they've done a fine job in revising it, and I really think we need to move forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? Yeah. Mr. Ward.
Yes. Thank you, I believe it was Mrs. Goodrich, thank you for pointing out a lot of the reasons why we as a committee felt that this needed to have more work done is because it is that important and it affects every homeowner. And if you were to look at the definition section and see how those acts in the definition section interact with the act itself, there's still some understanding as to what an individual homeowner can do. And we agree in spirit with the wetlands protection that needs to happen. We think that it is vitally important, and we are pushing that this be referred back to the planning board so that they can consult with the Conservation Commission, with the Buildings Inspector, with the Zoning Board of Appeals, and all the other relevant parties that need to interact and have an impact in what this looks like as to not take away any individual homeowner's rights. There were also some issues with the maps, and it wasn't abundantly clear what was involved and what wasn't, what was new to this act that wasn't previously covered by the Conservation Commission's other duties and how those interact. So the goal of this is to enact this. We fear that in its current form, should it have moved forward and fail, that that would be problematic for the town in a grievous way that is, you know, we don't want to get into. We're hoping that by buying ourselves a little more time and having the planning board meet with the Conservation Commission, having the planning board meet with the Zoning Board of Appeals, have the planning board meet with the Building Inspector, who is responsible for parts of this that hadn't been done. This was a valiant effort to try to bring something forward on a very tight timeline. However, when you rush to bring things forward that impact the town's zoning bylaws, you can sometimes throw the baby out with the bathwater, and you can make decisions that in hindsight look very bad. And all we're asking is that the zoning, or the planning board, take a little bit of time, meet with all the stakeholders, make sure that all the stakeholders understand what's in here, and make sure the homeowners understand what's in here. This is widely going to impact a large number of residents in town, and it is not something that should be done lightly. It is something that we agree needs to happen. As Ms. Goodrich pointed out, the recent storms have shown that our wetlands are important, and they help buffer some of the flooding, which we desperately need. But at the same time, the process can not be abandoned. If we did it this time, the next time something comes up that we need to rush to do, whether we do it right or wrong, this will be used as a precedent to say that we don't need a process. And we, as a finance committee, spent a lot of time looking at what the process was and what the process needs to be to protect all of us. And although we all agree with the intended goal of preventing development in our wetlands that will impact flooding and especially in a coastal environment like ours, it doesn't mean we should put forward something that hasn't been fully vetted and that could adversely impact a lot of homeowners that don't necessarily see it coming.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Speaking, further discussion of the motion to recommit?
My name is Alice Court, I live at Seven Valley Road. I'm talking about, after reviewing this paperwork, I think that some clarifications are still needed that are important, especially comparing the frequently asked questions, responses in comparison to the rules and regulations that were handed out today. In Section 2, Definitions, Number F, or Letter F, driving of piles, erection, or repair of buildings or structures of any kind are included in the determinations of what needs to have a permit. And yet, the frequently asked questions says that maintenance and improvement of any existing structure or building are exempt from the wetlands permitting process unless it would adversely impact the wetlands. So those seem contradictory statements to me, and I think that that does need to be resolved. Obviously, also, my, when we're talking about wetlands, my understanding of the definition of wetlands includes anything 100 feet within the high tide mark. And presumably, the high tide marks are going to be increasing as well over time. So I think I agree with Mr. Ward that this does impact a lot of residents of Nahant who have homes within the 100 feet of the shoreline, and that we should get it right. I'm all in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible, but I do support postponing it. I wonder if we can say that there's an expectation that the timeline, the groups involved have 90 days or something like that to come up with another, with another proposal. Now, I saw grimace and a smile, you know, so I don't know whether you like that timeline. But I think the population of the town definitely wants something happening quickly, but I must say, I don't, as written, I don't support it with a vote today, but rather would support a vote to postpone the final determination. Thank you.
Thank you, I believe it was Ms. Court. It is our understanding, and I will certainly be corrected by a plethora of lawyers should I get this wrong, but under the statutes in the Commonwealth, a zoning bylaw, once presented after having a public hearing, needs to be enacted favorably within six months. So as Mr. Snyder pointed out, the first public hearing on the zoning bylaw was on March 20. So it is our goal that the committee would have reviewed this, and it's our understanding that a special town meeting should be held at some point, and we would hope it would be for September 20 so that this could be acted upon favorably within that time period.
Mr. Bradley.
Okay. I'm in favor of postponement. I just received the improvements today, and I have not had time to look at it, and I don't think many other people have either. And I, it gets down to, I would not be able to determine whether I could plant grass on my lawn on the upper north-hand side and water it at 2:00 in the morning. It's kind of integrated. So I would suggest that we all take a little more time to look at it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Mr. Rogers.
Pete Rogers, I'm still at 44 Pearl Road.
Right behind you.
Fortunately, my question was anticipated by Ms. Court and answered by Brendan. I find the reason stated for giving this back to the planning board to be extremely persuasive. I support that. However, in 40 years of being involved in this kind of thing, I've seen more special town meetings that sort of slip between, beneath the waves than actually take place. And the reassurance you've given, I wanted the people to have some concrete sense of when this special town meeting would take place, because we all want it done right, but we don't want it just kicked down the road. And so if somebody in authority could say, yeah, we're definitely going to do this, it's not going to slip to next year's regular town meeting, it would be a great comfort to a lot of us.
Further discussion, Mrs. Rogers.
I'm Ms. B. Rogers, I'm also at 44 Pearl Road. And I just wanted to address, I think, the first or second comment. As I understand it, there are laws in place protecting wetlands. So the discussion about how important it is to protect our wetlands because of the risks of flooding, which we are all more sensitive to maybe than we were a few months ago. Protection of the wetlands is extremely important. Doing it right is also extremely important. But I understood from one of the meetings we had earlier in the week that, in fact, what we're talking about is an amending, an existing wetland protection, not an amendment, but that there are, yeah, maybe you can speak to that, Brendan, that there are protections in place, so it's not that we're just at the mercy of, you know, unbridled development.
We'll take care of this problem. And we'll do it by the.
And we'll do it by the, sometime in the fall, September, October.
September.
When it's September. Well, we got to push the Planning Board to have all these hearings. I'm not sure they have sufficient time to do that in that timetable. Because we're going to have a special town meeting anyways. That's coming. And where's Mahoven? We'll take care of that business about Sunday working. We'll take care of that with some restrictions on that too as well.
Further discussion, yes, Mr. Ward?
Just to address the points raised by B., there are currently, I believe there are state statutes that deal with wetlands protection. This would be an amendment to our zoning bylaw, adding it as a zoning requirement in addition to the current state statutes that deal with wetlands and wetlands protection. And correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if the town has an additional wetland bylaw. I don't think that we do. I think we follow under the state statute. This would be incorporating what you see here into a zoning bylaw of the Town of Nahant, which has a different effect.
Correct.
Further discussion, yes?
Paula at Marie 16 Harborview Road, Nahant. So I apologize, shame on me, I didn't get to the Planning Board hearing on this proposed zoning bylaw. And I hope to attend any future meetings, but I wish to sort of caution our citizens, this is a very important issue, the wetlands in this town. All of the land in this town is very important. Amendments or additions to the zoning bylaw are also very important, and they often take time to craft. And concern that a public hearing was held and this article must be dealt with either at this meeting or within six months while well-meaning may mean that something is still too rushed and crafted and comes back to us yet again from the Attorney General's office or has other deficits that a more measured process to review this much of a new bylaw might be necessary. So, I think, and I could be wrong, it's been a number of years since I've had the privilege of serving the town on the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning Board, but my understanding is if there are really significant problems with this proposed bylaw, that it could in fact be withdrawn, corrected, and then resubmitted for a new hearing process. I could be wrong. And if it were, so I think that there are other options, but I'm not sure that rushing to enact something that has significant problems is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Molly Conlon, 171 Willow Road. Call the question, please.
Well, the question has been called for. The question has been called for, we vote on the motion to call the question. It's a two-thirds majority vote, there's no debate upon it, there's no reconsideration. So, those in favor of calling the question at this time signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Those opposed, please stand. You folks in the doorway, are you opposed or just in the doorway?
I'm not opposed. I'm standing here because I want to speak.
I understand that, and whether you can or not will be determined by this vote.
Yes.
Nine, I got nine. So those opposed, nine. Those in favor of calling the question, please stand. Tom, we're going to take it as you're not voting in favor of it because you want to talk, so relax, you're all right. I'm not counting you. The motion, the call, the question has been called for. Now, the question is, and we now vote on the issue, the issue is whether to recommit the motion, recommit the article to the Planning Board as discussed earlier. Those in favor of recommitting the zoning article changes to the Planning Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you. Tom?
Yes?
We just took your thing that you were going to discuss away, but we're always glad to hear from you.
Well, Mr. Malatera, I came up and stood in the line a little, probably a little too late. I did want to speak on that last issue, and I still want to speak on that last issue.
Well, Tom?
My name is Thomas Costin. I'm a resident of 54 Mayolis Road. I have been in town for 50 years. I have been in government, elected officials, since age 21. Now with 91 and 70 years' experience in government, I think we should make a positive point here that the vote we took on the last motion is for one very important point and the reason why most of the people are here today. We do not want the Board of Selectmen or any town agency to pass anything in this town that's going to favor Northeastern University to take our green lands, our blue lands, and our wetlands away from the Town of Nahant people.
Thank you, Tom. Well, thank you very much. I allowed you to speak on that much, but unfortunately, you're out of order.
Oh, I know that. But you can never be out of order when you stand up to speak for what's the beauty and the future and the history of this town to let anyone, big or small, come in here and try to take away the history and the beauty and the sunrises coming over Eastern Point.
Thank you, Tom. We are now moving on to the next article.
Okay, this is point of order?
It was inspiring, and we are now moving on to the next article. Next article. Now, moving on.
This is just a point of order.
Point of order is something different than what you're about to say. So, we got to move on to the next. If it relates to the next article, or if you can't hear in the back or something like that, that would be fine. But we can't just run off and keep on going when we've already solved the issue. So the next article is, yes?
When it's put in, then you can discuss it.
Okay. Mr. Vander Slice, thank you very much.
Wow. And that is a tough act to follow.
Sure is.
I move the town vote to add Article 17 to the Town of Nahant general bylaws entitled "Stretch Energy Code" for the purpose of regulating the design and construction of buildings for the effective use of energy pursuant to Appendix AA of Chapter 115 of the Massachusetts Building Code, 780 CMR 1.00 et cetera. The Stretch Energy Code, including future additions, amendments, and modifications thereto, with an effective date of July 1st, 2018, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk or take any other action relative thereto.
Seconded by Mr. Manady.
And, let's see here, so if you want more, it begins on page 123 of the book, and I would just like to note that this is a rare opportunity for us to realize a double benefit from passing this article. Not only do we get to do Right By The Planet, but we have substantial financial benefits that will come out of this as well.
Mr. Chairman?
This is just a point of information. Back about a year ago, we, I initiated the Green Community Committee with the Board of Selectmen, and they have done a bang-up job. They have done a tremendous amount of work, and I just want to recognize them. Diana Montez is our chairman, Ellen Goldberg is our vice chairman, Nick Brokhan, Margaret Alexander, Lisa Haley, Chet Hopkins, Nicole Gogan, Abigail Roberts, Johnny Zimmerman Ward, and Terry Motley. They deserve a real round of applause. They've done an unbelievable job. And I urge you to pass this Stretch Energy Code. Thank you.
Well, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 30, Mr. Fogum.
So a little preface for Articles 30 and 31. They're both articles that deal with instances where the town has not adopted the local option on state general law related to automatic sprinkler systems. So Article 30. I move that the town vote to accept provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26H.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir?
I was having trouble hearing the motion because there's so much noise out in the lobby. Is there anything that can be done about that?
Could you repeat the motion? Thank you.
Okay, I'll repeat the motion. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26H.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. We have a discussion?
Yep, just a point of clarification.
Sorry, I missed it on the way up.
Oh, yep. This is Ben Zach from 18 Ferbisch Road. Quick point of clarification, would boarding houses uncover people renting out their properties under like Airbnb or other types of sort of single?
No. There's only one structure in town that is qualified as a boarding house currently, and that's the Nahant Country Club. And they already have a sprinkler system. So it's just to bring us in line with the state statute. It already exists in the building code, so it's just another level where we as a community adopt the general law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I jumped in on a little bit there, let's try it again. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor.
So again, this deals with the same issue, but not in boarding houses, but instead multiple dwelling units. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26, aye.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article 32, Mr. Ward?
All right. As you're getting the impression all the borrowing articles are going to be rather long, so this one will be another one. I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by borrowing the sum of $175,000 to pay the cost of drainage improvements to the Ward Road and Bear Pond areas, specifically resolving the gravity outfall at Bear Pond, assessing fixing the pipes that drain Ward, Fox Hill, Castle Roads, dredging the drainage ditch, and providing a permanent portable pump to the Ward Road area, including the costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $175,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote and each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs, of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Ms. Girardello. Further discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Oh, thank you, Brendan. Oh, sorry. I go along with the Advisory and Finance Committee on this article. In the past 40 years, we've had three 100-year storms, and we had the highest tide ever in January ever recorded. This area goes underwater, they were underwater for, I'll say, six days. This was horrible. The worst part about it was that these people had to live through it. But secondly, when they flood, there goes Nahant Road. So, we can't, we can't go through that again. We lost an ambulance, an ambulance got busted, the brand-new ambulance because of the storm. It was a necessary evil, unfortunately. We need to pass this and we need to get, I've said this before, many, many, many years ago, a lot of our fathers figured out that the water could flow both ways, into Lynn Harbor and back to Bear Pond. It needs to be dredged. I went down there, I go down there all the time. It's horrible. It should be dredged very, very, very deeper than it is. The dump has too much soil in it. There's a lot of things that go on down there. So I'm supporting this 100%. We can't allow this. We do get big storms in the summer, too. So we need this to be enacted upon immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Jeff Thomas, 16 Little Nahant Road. I have a request that, consideration that this article be amended or else another article brought up that would add, request for funding for riprap on Short Beach to prevent additional flooding of Nahant Road and the parking lot, I mean, the playground.
Well, the article does not allow for that, so first off, we couldn't do that within this article this evening, this afternoon I should say. But certainly, as you heard several times from the Finance Committee, we're making a diligent effort to establish capital improvement committee and trying to get going on our debt structure. So certainly, that, those issues would be entertained within the scope of hopefully duly authorized capital improvement committee. We would look at those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
I will tell you firsthand, during that last storm, I was down on Fox Hill Road and Castle Road, and we dedicated two pumps to the manhole that's down there that actually goes, it's connected to the pipe that goes out onto Doggy Beach. That pipe has to be open, and I believe that we should have a dedicated pump in that area to drain that down. And I can tell you, I literally wash it. I was up to my waist in water in Lowlands, setting up pumps, you know, I stayed there the whole night. And I will tell you, I watched the ditch, I watched the water come backwards from Willow Road to Fox Hill Road. So it's imperative that this passes, and it's imperative that we get this situation taken care of immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Christine Johnson Liscio, 15 Fox Hill Road. I want to thank, first of all, the Board of Selectmen for putting forth this article and the acting town manager, Dennis Ball, and the FinCom for supporting this article. It's really important. It is a town-wide problem. When we flood in the Lowlands and Nahant Road and Castle Road are closed, access to ambulance, to fire, to mutual aid ceases for Nahant, and this has happened in this past storm. We lost an ambulance in the waters. It's also happened in previous storms. So, we really, really appreciate your support for this. Not only is it the residents of the Lowlands who are sitting in water that's more than unhealthy for days on end. That water contains all kinds of pollutants and chemicals that are really unsafe for children and families, but it took hours and days and how many pumps to pump out millions of gallons of water from the Lowlands. So, this is a town-wide safety issue. It's one that affects all of us in town. We just voted to appropriate $4 million to our water and sewer infrastructure, and this article will help to protect some of that because in this last storm, the water treatment station, substation, almost went under because of flooding in the Lowlands. Our other infrastructure in the Lowlands includes the natural gas substation and the electrical substation. So, our vital services are located in the Lowlands and also need to be protected. We were really fortunate that we didn't lose any lives or any homes in this last storm. However, in the flooding and the blizzard of '78, a resident of Nahant died as a result of flooding in the Lowlands, and a home burned to the ground. So, this is an important issue. It's a town-wide issue, and we thank you all for finally addressing it. It's a broken drainage pipe, basically, and it was first identified by the Army Corps of Engineer over 23 years ago. They had, at that time, done a study after the no-name storm in '91 and recommended the opening of that drainage pipe because it's the most efficient and effective way to drain the Lowlands. The current ditch system we have that goes from the Lowlands uphill and to the other side of town is not viable for draining the Lowlands, and so we really need a solution that works, and this would be the very beginning and, hopefully, the solution that we need to fix it. So, thank you, and please vote "yes" for this article.
I do.
And I'd like to call the question.
Sure.
I just wanted to add, Christine's right, and I forgot to mention this. Everybody here should probably go on a field trip to the Lowlands Pumping Station through the DPW, and you might be horrified, but it's... If that goes down, and I've seen it, I actually rebuilt two of the pumps down there at one time, and if that goes down, we're in trouble. And that place was underwater. You couldn't get to it. And there's, you know, thousands of volts that run through those big, big electric motors. They have a diesel generator in there. There's a fuel tank that's underground that services that diesel generator if the electricity goes down. It is so important that we take care of this. It just has to be done, and I recommend it. Absolutely.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying "aye."
Aye!
Wow![1103.15][1103.15](Laughter) And those opposed, no. There are no weathermen in the audience? According to the weathermen, we're safe for the next 300 years. The motion carries unanimously. Article 33, Mr. Carrangelo. Oh, actually, I guess the petitioner's going to present a motion.
My name's Elizabeth Kelly, 34 Bayview Ave. I move to refer this request to the town-owned land study committee for consideration and report to the Board of Selectmen.
Seconded by Mr. Ward. Further discussion on the motion? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Malatera. Very quickly, the language, we need to clarify a few more things with the language to assist Mrs. Kelly to get this done. I don't think there's any super opposition, but it's more of a legal issue, so by referring it back there, we can come back at a special town meeting where we get the attorneys together, get the language correct, and hopefully help her out going forward. So, I would suggest you pass to refer this back to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Article 34, Ms. Giarandello.
This is a standard annual warrant that is regarding the continuation of committees. I move that the town vote to continue the following standing committees to June 30 of 2019. The Community Preservation Committee, Cable TV Advisory Committee, Veterans Memorial Committee, Sailing Committee, Cemetery Advisory Committee, Coast Guard Housing Committee...
Quiet, please.
Town Charter and Bylaw Committee, the Tennis Committee, Town-Owned Land Study Committee, the Nahant Alternative Energy Committee, the Golf Course Management Advisory Committee, and Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. Thank you.
Seconded by Mr. Fogum. Mr. Chairman.
May I, I'd like to amend it to add the Fire Station Assessment Committee. It's left out.
I can't hear you. You have to speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave. I'm sorry. I'd like to amend this to include the Fire Station Assessment Committee. It wasn't added on to this. Can we just add that to it?
Is the amendment accepted by the motion maker?
It's not on here. It should be included, I would think. (Inaudible) work. The Fire Station Assessment Committee. Dennis? Who established the Fire Station Assessment Committee? Who?
I think a former town administrator.
A former town administrator. So, it's a standing committee.
But it was voted in last year. That's what I was looking for, was the motions for my...
Austin? Was this a... It was a standing committee. I think it was...
It was voted in?
Voted in.
Nahant Hall, Florida.
No? Okay. So, is it...
Nahant Committee, so you don't need to...
Nahant Committee. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Further discussion? Yes?
For a point of clarification, the Coast Guard Housing Committee, oh, I have to say my name, Janet Dolan, 45 Pleasant Street. My question is, several years ago, maybe about 10 years ago, this committee was established, and it ran its course for quite a while. Last year, it was disbanded, and a new committee was put into place with new members. My question is, how active has this committee been with the Board of Selectmen regarding the military housing? And I... Maybe someone could speak to that. And this is sort of ties into it. I don't know. It's maybe speculation, but the Board of Selectmen has gone into executive session in March and April three times relative to the potential purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. So, the only property I know of that could really be up for sale is the military housing. So, I don't know... Is there any...
I can answer that. We can't discuss the executive session.
Okay.
But as far as the Coast Guard housing, I've made my, how I feel, adamantly popular around town. However, the committee, I've asked two or twice since January that they come before us regularly to meet with us, which they have.
Okay.
They've been meeting regularly.
Okay.
They've kept us informed.
Okay.
And they're still in the process, if you can believe it. But wait a minute, that's showing my bias. They're still in the process.
Yeah.
And at some point, they have to come before us, so that can be part of a special town meeting, but they're not there yet, and I talked with Peter Barber at length about it today. They're still doing the process because the town meeting last year redefined the whole area, took everything else out. So, it's being looked at as an area now, is the best I can tell you.
Okay.
And they're doing a great job.
Okay. And just for a historical perspective, this goes back to 2004.
2000...
When we had a special town meeting to acquire that property from the federal government.
Yes, I thought it was 2005, but yeah, give or take a year.
Well, I happened to be chairman of the committee at the time, so it was 2004, and that's...
I never argued with the woman, so go ahead.
No, that's all right.[1554.01][1554.01](Laughter) It's a long time.
You can help it.
You know? And we had hoped that it would be a much quicker process because we're still paying principal and interest.
Well, I've said this before, and I'll say it right before the whole town. 2008, a committee got together and got the group, called the Coast Guard Housing Committee, and received $100,000 to whatever they did.
Okay.
And in September of two years ago, there was a special town meeting where the town came out and said, "No condos."
Yeah.
And then I tried to do something which got shot down, and now a new committee is taking over, which probably is the right thing to do, to do it for the one final time.
Point of order. Is there anyone suggesting that the committee should not be continued for next year, which is the issue that's before the House?
No, I think no.
The committee what?
No.
The committee, you're complaining about what the committee's doing, but the question before the House is whether it should be continued or disbanded, and I think that's the issue that we have to discuss.
No, the complaint is my bias, and of course, they should be continued because they're doing a great job.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article...
35.
Thank you, 35.
All right. You ready for the last one?
Yes!
Last article. Mr. Manady.
Yes. I move that the town vote to accept gifts of money for the Nahant Life Saving Station, Green Lawn Cemetery, Fourth of July Committee, Fireworks Committee, Recreation Committee, Council on Aging, (laugh) Johnson School Programs, Beautification Committee, Sailing Committee, Tennis Committee, Charles Kelly Scholarship Program, Veterans Memorial Committee, Nahant Community Garden, Nahant Public Library, Youth Commission, Nahant Public Safety Departments, Department of Public Works, and the Memorial Day Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Costin. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Thank you so much for being here on this beautiful day, but I think we should all meet down at Lowlands while the weather's still good. What a great job the FinCom has done. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Fantastic. Great job under difficult circumstances, and the same with the Selectmen and everyone else. Thank you very much. Brendan.